The Lord really minister and speak to us. Our loving and gracious heavenly father, in the blessed name of Lord Jesus Christ, to be rejoiced to be in your presence, though we are far away from each other geographically, yet Lord, we could come together at thy feet to meditate upon thy word. We know how powerful, how living, how transforming thy word is. Lord, we pray that we may be receptive to the power of your word. Give us thy grace, for we ask these things in the blessed and worthy name of our Lord and our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. Earlier, we saw in the two studies, the importance of assembling together and why the Hebrew Christians, some of them stopped coming to the assembly and some of them were contemplating to stop coming for fellowship. So, the writer to the Hebrews was trying to extol and exalt the greatness of Jesus Christ in his person, in his priesthood, and in his power. In this context, we try to study various scripture portions in order to understand that God's purpose in saving you and me is that we might grow corporately together. Now salvation is an individual matter, but when it comes to growth and security and strength, we need to be in a fellowship. Now, when you look at the death of Lord Jesus Christ, who died for us on the cross of Calvary, there are two ways of looking at it. You could either look from Galatians, chapter 2, verse 20, that is one perspective. And there is another perspective where you stand with Acts 20 and verse 28, and then look at it. Now, the first perspective is with Paul, where he says that I am crucified with Christ, nevertheless I live, and the life that I now live in the flesh, I live by the faith of the Son of God, who loved me and gave himself for me. You know, that's the individual dimension to our salvation. We all could testify to this fact. Christ loved me. Christ died for me. He is my Savior. Now, that's the individual aspect. But from the other angle, Acts, chapter 20 and verse 28, talking to the Ephesian elders, Paul was trying to tell them, the church of the living God, which he purchased with his own blood. So, if we were to raise the question, why did Jesus shed his precious blood, his blameless, precious blood on the cross of Calvary? We could come up with these two answers. The first answer is, he did so because he loved me. He wanted to rescue me. There was no other way whereby I could be saved. That's one dimension. That's one perspective. But the second perspective is, he died that the church could come into existence. In the four Gospels, the word church appears only two types. First, in Matthew, chapter 16 and verse 18, and then again in Matthew's Gospel, chapter 18 and verse 17. In all the four Gospels, these are the only two references to church. Now, we might wonder, if church is so important, why is it so little mentioned in the Gospels? For the simple reason, the church cannot come into existence if Jesus does not go to the cross. That's why after he died, was buried, he rose again, ascended to the Father, presented his own blood to be the basis of our atonement and reconciliation, then he comes back and tells that we are all the children of God, and then he made those disciples to wait in prayer, as we read in Acts, chapter 1, and on the 50th day, there's a descent of the Holy Spirit and the first local church comes into existence. There cannot be a church in Acts if there is no cross in the Gospels. So, we need to see these two aspects very carefully. Firstly, the cross means my salvation, your salvation, on a personal level. Secondly, the cross means the church has come into existence. How precious is the church? If I can find and estimate the value of the blood of Jesus Christ, so valuable is the church of God. Christ died for the church. Christ died that the church may come into existence. Now, this is one truth that needs to go very deep into our hearts. My security, my strength, my wisdom, my power, my victory, my revelation, it all depends upon my oneness with the children of God. And in this context, forsaking the assembling of ourselves together, we saw today that the word forsake means it was intentional. It was not accidental. So, when you say they forsook the house of the Lord, they were actually forfeiting, losing the graces that God has intended for them. We also saw this morning from Psalm 133, how good and how pleasant for the brethren to dwell together in unity. There you enjoy the anointing, anointing oil that's poured upon Aaron's head. It comes down to the skirts of the garments, covering his whole body. And then verse 3 says, there the Lord commanded the blessing, and even life forevermore. So, forsaking the assembly is to forfeit, lose the graces intended for my blessing, intended for my growth. Now, coming to 1 Corinthians, you find Paul speaking in detail at length about the body life. Now, one of the picture languages, what we call figurative language, is that the church is compared to a building, the church is compared to a bride, and the church is compared to the body of Christ. You find this comparison in 1 Corinthians, you also find it in Romans, you find it in Ephesians, you find it in Colossians. By showing a familiar figure of the human body, God is trying to speak to us. He says, I am the head of this body, and we are all placed in the body as different members. As a single member, isolated member, I am of no use. In fact, to be isolated is to be repulsive to any human sight. Imagine taking a single arm and putting it in a jar and keeping it in the showcase. How horrible that should be. A hand needs to be a part of the body. And this unity is not an organizational unity, it's an organic unity, because the same life keeps flowing into all parts of the body under the headship of Lord Jesus Christ. Now, you will see in 1 Corinthians, Paul is developing the importance of staying together, assembling together, functioning together as a local church. Because that church was facing a lot of issues. They had moral issues, they had personality issues, there were divisions in their mates. And Paul, instead of directly addressing those problems, he tells them who they are in the Lord Jesus Christ and what Christ has made them. He says, you were all scattered, isolated, lost individuals. But it's the Lord Jesus Christ who sought you and me and saved us. And having saved us, he brought us together and put us into the body of Christ. So, in 1 Corinthians, chapter 12 in particular, almost a whole chapter, he talks about the body principle. How we need to rightly be related to each other as members of the same body. Because the same life keeps flowing into all members, into all parts of the body, under the headship of Christ. And to lubricate that relationship, comes chapter 13, where Paul speaks about love. He says, love is the lubricating factor that helps us to function together. Because living together and functioning together is all very easy. We all have our temperamental weaknesses. We all come with our baggage, though we are all born again, saved, redeemed, and we are worshippers. We all come with our own weaknesses and our own strengths. None of us is perfect. So, and no church is perfect because we are all imperfect. We serve a perfect Lord, but we are conscious, we are aware that we are not perfect ourselves. We are pressing towards perfection. But God declares that we are saints, but then we keep working towards sanctification, day after day, cleansing ourselves from all filtiness of the flesh and the spirit, as we read in 2 Corinthians, chapter 7 and verse 1. So, love is a lubricating factor, because there could come relational frictions. My brother may not understand me, I may not understand my brother, carefully and properly. Functioning together has got its own challenges. And then, when you come to chapter 14, he says, look at the different gifts God has given to us, so that we could use them for the edification of the body, for the building up of the body. And this context is very interesting. Whenever I read 1 Corinthians, chapter 14, I'm always encouraged in my heart, because verses 31 and 33, Paul addresses even those coral Corinthians as prophets. Do you know that's a calling God has given to you and me? We are called to be prophets unto God. We are called to be priests unto God. 1 Peter 2:5, 1 Peter 2:9, Revelation 1:6, Revelation 5:10, these are some of the verses that speak to us about our priesthood calling. We are called to be prophets. Now, by the word prophet, I am not using the connotation of predicting the future. You know, there are two meanings to the word prophesying. The first meaning is you foretell, predict the future. But the normal, common meaning of the word prophesying is found in 1 Corinthians, chapter 14 and verse 3. He that prophesies, prophesies unto men for their edification, exhortation, and comfort. When we speak to each other to edify, exhort, and comfort, we are doing the work of a prophet. And when you come to the book of Revelation, chapter 19 and verse 10, we read about the spirit of prophecy. What is the spirit of prophecy? The essence, the spirit of prophecy is the testimony of Jesus. Every time you take an opportunity to talk about Lord Jesus, maybe to your colleague, maybe in the marketplace, maybe to your friend, to your relative, you are actually standing as a prophet and speaking in the name of the Lord. If a child of God is really conscious of this exalted calling, when I say exalted calling, the calling of a priest, the calling of a prophet. In fact, the Bible uses also the third word, we are called to be kings. Because Revelation, chapter 1 and verse 6 says, having washed us in his own blood, he made us kings and priests. He doesn't say he will make us kings and priests, he made us. The day of my salvation is the day of my coronation. But then God keeps telling me, now that I have crowned you, live up to my expectation. Don't lose it. Don't disqualify yourself. Now, there could be a prince born in a family, but if that prince is not going to behave in a worthy manner, supposing he has a deranged mind, he is disqualified from the throne. I used to always think of David, you know, when you think of David, he had several wives and several sons, but among them all, Ammon is the eldest. Normally, he should have succeeded to be the next king. But God had to bypass several sons and pick up a very young Solomon to come in his place. Now, what went wrong with Ammon? We know the terrible thing that he did with his own sister, Tamar. And he was brutally killed. Absalom was so beautiful. When you look at the angle of personality and beauty, there was none like Absalom. But unfortunately, even that young man disqualified himself. He rebelled before his time, and he had a very shameful death. What I'm trying to impress upon you and me is, God has saved us, called us to be prophets, called us to be priests, called us to be kings, and says, you qualify yourself for this. Be careful in your walk with the Lord. So, in chapter 14, he is trying to emphasize the ministry part. In chapter 12, he talks about the relationship part. He says, you're saved, and when you're saved, God has set you in the body. 1 Corinthians 12:8, God has set the members, each one of them, according to his will. It's not according to my choosing. You see, when it comes to gifting and the area of service, it's not I who decide, it's the Lord who decides. It's a sovereign choice. We should never complain, we should never envy any brother or any sister for the gift they have. If the Lord chooses to give them a particular gift, and if he does not choose to give me the same gift, I need to really thank the Lord, because my calling would be different from theirs. Remember one thing. In the matter of calling, we are all alike, but in the field of our calling, we are not alike. God sends us to the different parts of the field with a different gifting and our area of service. We are not competitors, we are comrades. We complement each other. So, we need to realize that God has put us in a set position. God has set, the word set in English means fixity of position. In other words, God is trying to speak through Paul to tell us, stay put where God has put you. Don't keep moving around. Don't envy your neighbor. Don't trespass into his boundary. If your ministry has been assigned to you according to your gift, keep on doing that. So, God sets us in his body. God baptizes us, 1 Corinthians 12:13, into the same body. And God expects us to obey the authorities. When you come to the end of the chapter, he says, he has set firstly apostles, secondly prophets, thirdly teachers. You know, there is a hierarchy. There is order, there is delegated authorities. God keeps us in submission to authorities. When you look at Acts, chapter 9, when Paul was saying, do you remember the two questions that he asked on the road to Damascus? The first one that he asked was, Lord, who are you? He was shocked that God met him in such a strange way. And when he received the answer, I am Jesus whom you persecute. Without hesitation, he asked the second question, what will thou have me to do? Acts, chapter 9 and verse 6. The Lord does not answer that question. See, he is directly in conversation with the Lord. The Lord could have answered him straight away, because Paul is asking straight away the question, and God could answer that question. But what does the Lord say? The Lord says, go into the city, it shall be told thee. A very vague answer. Who will come and tell him? What are his credentials? Nothing, nothing is told. Paul goes there, he is fasting and praying, then God sends Aranias. You know, when you read about Aranias, the only occasion you read about Aranias is in connection with the conversion experience of Saul. We don't read about him anywhere else. In other words, he is not a prominent apostle or a great preacher. I don't know whether he was an elder in the church at Damascus. I do not know. But one principle comes out here. I want you to very carefully notice this, and that principle is, when Jesus said, why do you persecute me? He impressed upon Paul, by touching the least member in the body, you are touching me. By tormenting and afflicting the least member of the body, you are touching me, because there is an indivisible oneness between the head and the body. Do you see this? This lesson, Paul could never forget. That's why much later, writing to Corinthians, Ephesians, and Colossians and Romans, this picture loomed so large before him, and he writes about the human body. We need to look upon the church, because there is an indivisible oneness between the head of the church and the body of the church. What we do to the body, we do it to the head. If I ill-treat the body, I ill-treat the head. If I serve the body, I serve the head. If I honor the buyer, I honor the master, I honor the head. So, this principle, this is the first thing that we learn in that whole episode. The second thing that we learn is God setting a delegated authority. God could have directly spoken to him, but the Lord does not. He says, it shall be told thee. Many times, you find in the Bible, when people pray to the Lord, instead of God directly answering them, he sends his prophet to tell their answer. For example, Hezekiah, the eighth king of Judah. Senecare must come. The Assyrian proud prince, challenging Judah and Jerusalem, he wanted to destroy, because he already conquered the ten northern tribes. He said, I can easily wipe out these two tribes. And he writes a very humiliating letter, then what is, I say, what does Hezekiah do? He takes that letter, spreads it before the Lord, and cries out to God. He says, Lord, you are so great. This is your problem. Do something about it. How does God answer? God sends Isaiah. It's Isaiah who comes and tells him what God was going to do. So, we need to realize that there are two kinds of authorities that we encounter in a local church. The first one is the direct authority, where the spirit of God speaks to us, the word of God speaks to us, that is one level. But the usual means by which he speaks to us is through delegated authorities, the elders that he has set apart in the church, the church leadership, those who minister God's word to us. You find this principle not only in Acts, chapter 9, you find that also in Acts, chapter 8. You remember Ethiopian Yuna coming all the way to Jerusalem, taking part in the feast there, he buys a copy of the book of Isaiah, which should have been very costly those days, and as he was riding back to his hometown, he was reading from Isaiah, and God stirs up Philip and says, you run after this chariot. And he runs after the chariot, and eventually leads that minister to Christ, and he baptizes him. God could have easily spoken to him directly from the word, but then he uses a human instrument there. So, you find this principle not only in Acts 8, you also find it in Acts 9, as we just saw, where God, you, Saranias, foresaw. When you come to chapter 10, the same principle. Cornelius, the Roman centurion, is waiting before God, praying to God, the angel of God appears to him and speaks to him. He says, your arms are remembered. He was a very godly pious man, but was not saved. And so, he says, the angel says, send for one Simon, one Peter, who would come and tell you what you must do. God could have told him directly, the angel could have told him, but they said, no, only through Peter, I want my will, my counsel to be made known to you. So, you find consecutively, 8, 9, and 10, the same principle, repeating all over again. Every time we come to the local church, every time you attend a meeting, you must come, I must come with a mindset, Lord, help me to honor the brother who is going to minister God's word. Let me see behind it the authority of the Lord, the message of the Lord. Help me to receive it, not as the word of men, but as it is in truth, the word of God. That's what Thessalonians did, 1 Thessalonians 2:13. Paul really praises them. He says, when you receive the word, you received it not as the word of men, but as it is in truth, the word of God, and it effectually works in you, because you believed it as the word of God. I think we should strike a balance between Acts 17:11 and 1 Thessalonians 2:30. 1 Thessalonians 2:30 is that you accept it as the word of God, and Acts 17:11, like the barriots, we search the word of God, and make sure that the preacher agrees with the scripture, or in other words, his message harmonizes with the truths of the scripture. And as we approach the end times, this exercise is all the more necessary. Way back in probably 70s or 80s, I read in a magazine that there were 25,000 denominations in those days. We have only 66 books, and even if you go by chapters, it's, we have only 1189 chapters, but there were 25,000 denominations. And today, I'm sure it should be 40,000 to 50,000 denominations, and each denomination emphasizing some particular truth and giving up the rest of the truths. I'm not here to judge anybody, but I am only warning my own heart and warning you not to be carried away by the eloquence of any preacher, not to be carried away by the popularity a man enjoys. Because the Bible says, thou shalt not follow a multitude to do evil. Sometimes the right is in the minority, not in the majority. Down through the centuries, the truth has always been preserved by a negligible minority, not by an impressive majority. And 1 John 4:1 warns us, beloved, believe not every spirit, but try whether the spirits thereof God, because false prophets have gone out into the world. You see that? If this was the pathetic, tragic condition right in the first century, you can compound it, multiply it, magnify it several times over after 21 centuries, as we approach the end time. And the enemy appears to us in three different forms. Of course, he is called the thief. John 10:1, he is called the tempter. In Matthew, chapter 4 and verse 3, he is called a liar, John 8:44, and a murderer. He is called a deceiver, Revelation 12:9, but the way he manifests to us could be in three forms. First, he could come as a subtle serpent, as you find in Genesis 3, as well as in the last book, Revelation 12. The second way he could manifest himself is like a roaring lion, threatening. He could come like a big flood, Isaiah 59:19. And if both these strategies and approaches fail, he has a sure hit in the third strategy. 2 Corinthians 11:14, appearing as an angel of light. He could take the Bible in his hand, come with an angelic appearance, have a resemblance of truths, a semblance of truth, and slowly departing from the word of God. Now, how do you know? How do you know unless you are serious students of God's word? Unless I constantly feed upon God's word, I will not be able to distinguish the error that is subtly coming to me, covered in much truths. There is a lot of truth, but there is a little error inside. And ultimately, by following error, I'm going to be at loss. I cannot excuse myself in the presence of the Lord on the day of judgment, saying, oh, Lord, I was deceived by this preacher, I was deceived by this pastor, I was deceived by this elder, by this congregation. God will say, did I not tell you in 1 John 4:1, beloved, believe not- By this congregation. God will say, did I not tell you in 1 John four one, beloved, believe not every spirit? Did I not tell you 1 Thessalonians five twenty-one, prove all things and hold fast that which is good? Did I not warn you, John twelve forty-eight, the word that I speak unto you, the same shall judge you on the last day? Why did you not take heed to my word? We will have no word of defense. My beloved brothers and sisters, as we approach the end time. Notice one of the predictions that Jesus made was. Luke eighteen eight, where the son of man comes, shall he find faith on the earth? Actual biblical faith. Is going to be on the decline, not on the increase. In spite of all the preaching that's going on, in spite of tons of. So-called biblical spiritual literature turning out of our presses. In spite of so many meetings and congregations and conferences going on through the media now. Actual biblical faith is going to be on the decline, not on the increase. These are going to be the days of famine. Of hearing God's word. Now, how can you safeguard your soul? How can I safeguard my soul? By personally being a student of God's word. One of the verses that I often remind myself. John twelve forty-eight. The word that I have spoken to you, the same. Shall judge you on the last day. The only basis, the sole basis on which God is going to judge us, evaluate our work. The merit or demerits dependent on how far. We have synchronized with the word of God. How much we have aligned ourselves with the word of God. I cannot play with my eternity. God has made it very plain, that judgment is sure, death is sure, judgment is sure. It is appointed unto men once today and after this day judgment. I'm not going to come back and live my life all over again, no. On the day of judgment. Either I will lose or gain. Praise God, if you are a believer, your soul is saved, but. My exaltation in the kingdom, my joy in the kingdom depends upon how much I have been faithful to the word of God. So. Gathering together is to learn the word of God. Gathering together is to know my limitations. My boundaries. Staying in my boundary and functioning as a member of the body of Christ. Now, in the next few minutes, I just want to focus upon. This very commonly. Coated verse, where two or three are gathered together in my name, there am I in their midst. Now, what does it mean gathering together in the name of the Lord? Now, the name of the Lord stands for three spiritual realities. The first thing. It stands for the authority. When you say the name of the Lord, you speak out God's authority. When I pray, when I pray in the name of Jesus. That means I come in the name of Lord Jesus, who has given all authority. The name before which every knee should bow, every tongue should confess. Secondly, when I say I am gathering. In his name, that means. It could be translated as gathering unto his name, which means the centrality of my gathering. We come together, we assemble together, not to hear a preacher, though we are doing it right now. But. Our ultimate desire and plan is to see the master, see the Lord. We don't come together to meet each other, that is secondary. To fellowship with one another, that is secondary. We come primarily to meet the Lord. We gather unto the Lord. He is central in our fellowship. It's possible for me as a Christian. To be identified with a local church. For years together and yet not be aligned to the Lord. Once again, going back to David's family, you find Absalom. Having murdered unknown, he runs away to Geshu, he stays there for three years, 2 Samuel thirty thirty-eight. Then Job goes, persuades him, brings him back to Jerusalem. After three years, he comes to Jerusalem where his father lives. Father and son don't meet each other. Chapter fourteen, verse twenty-eight. He dwells there at Jerusalem for two full years. And did not see the king's face. So altogether for five years, there is no relationship between the father and the son. Living in the same city. That's possible for you and for me. We can be found in the best fellowship without a personal relationship, ongoing relationship with the Lord. Maybe we have a positional relationship, but no functional relationship. Why wasn't it possible for Absalom? Because Absalom was unwilling to humble himself. And confess his sin to his father. He committed such a terrible crime of murdering his brother. But he never humbled himself and said, what a terrible sin I have committed against God and against my father. Later, when he met David, he says, if there is any sin in me, you know, look at the language he uses. So. We primarily go to meet the Lord and in any gathering, in any meeting, when you don't touch the Lord. When you sing songs and touch people and come away, the very purpose of going to a meeting is lost. The time is wasted. Efforts are wasted. And thirdly, whenever we come together, we come to a person. With a character, the personality of God. Unto his name. The name of God stands for his character. For who he is. His holiness, his love, his mercy, his grace. Today, the Lord is not in our midst. He is at the right hand of the Father. But he has left his name down on earth below. He has left his spirit down below. Because Lord Jesus said, when I go to the Father, I'll spend the spirit in my name, John fourteen twenty-six. That's why in Romans eight nine. The Holy Spirit is called the Spirit of Christ. And thirdly, he has left his word here. Colossians three sixty, the word of Christ, let the word of Christ dwell in you richly in all wisdom, the word of Christ. And fourthly, he has left his own body. 1 Corinthians eleven twenty-nine, every time we come around the Lord's table, we say, it is the Lord's body. And fifthly, he has left his house, Mark thirteen thirty-four. Now, look at these five spiritual realities. I can touch Lord Jesus. I can relate myself to him. When I relate to his name. Relate to his spirit, relate to his word, relate to his body. And relate to his house. Not only Lord Jesus is at the right hand of the Father. That's one dimension. The other dimension is. He is walking right now in the midst of seven golden candlesticks, Revelation one thirty and Revelation two one. So. We need to understand. How the Lord dwells in our midst. And how we need to honor the fellowship where we go. Knowing. That where two or three are gathered together unto his name, there he is in their midst. So. Paul, when he looked upon the believers at Corinth, he was very sad. In spite of the fact that he says, he calls them saints, that is their position. And then in chapter one, verse seven, he says, you come behind in no gift, that means it was a fully gifted church. But what is the use? They had gifts, they had no fruit. Let me tell you, brothers and sisters, today there is so much emphasis on gifts. So much emphasis on the exaltation of man. When I talk about man, I'm not talking about unbelievers, I'm talking about Christendom, I'm talking about believers. And people like me who are in the forefront ministering the word. But God is not looking for gifts, because gifts are something which he gave. And he will take it back one day. What he is looking for is fruit. Fruit. In Matthew's Gospel, chapter seven. He looks at the multitude of preachers. Who claim to do, who claim to have done great things when they were upon earth. Have you not prophesied in thy name? Have you not done many wonderful works in thy name? Have you not driven off devils in thy name? Then will I profess unto them, seven twenty-three. Depart from me only that one iniquity. Now, what is the iniquity they committed? What is the sin they committed? Verse twenty-one says, not everyone that says, Lord, shall enter into the kingdom of heaven, but he that doeth the will of my Father. Now, what was the will of the Father? If we still go backwards, verses sixteen and twenty. The Lord repeats the same statement twice. You shall know them by their fruits. You shall know them by their fruits. The badge of discipleship. The real marks of discipleship. They are fruits, not gifts. And fruits refer to character. Herein is my Father glorified, when he bring forth much fruit. So shall he be my disciples, John's Gospel, chapter fifteen and verse eight. So when Paul looked upon the. Church at Corinth, he was very sad. They were observing the Lord's table very carelessly. That's the reason why he had to give such a long instruction. Which. All our assemblies, most of the churches read out every time they come around the Lord's table. But before giving instructions about the Lord's table. He says a very sharp, stinging word in verse seventeen, 1 Corinthians eleven seventeen, he says. You come together not for the better, but for the worse. He says, the very fact that you are coming together is not helping anybody. Isn't that a very sad statement of believers coming together not for the better, but for the worse? We are caught up in two situations now. Coming together for worse, or in Acts nineteen thirty-two, as it happened in Athens. A big group came together, someone was saying something, another one was saying something else, and the more part knew not wherefore they were come together. Many times, the so-called average believer is at a loss. He doesn't know why he comes to the church. Maybe there is a social pressure. Maybe because that has become a habit for him to come every Sunday. Maybe because he finds some kind of a peace, sitting there listening to songs or listening to a message. Unless we are rightly motivated. With the right understanding of the scriptures. We can fall into that category, coming together. Not knowing why we came together. And the second part, coming together not for the better, but for the worse. But dearly beloved brothers and sisters, this is not the plan of God. God's plan is when we come together. There is such richness. That we enjoy. Because of coming together. The life of Christ should flow out of me, out of you, so that we. Both receive and release God's life. We put in all our gifts to sustain. We have that pool bank from which we are all enriched. God's way of enriching us, empowering us. Enlightening us. Is when the believers come together with the right motives, with the right commitment. To obey the delegated authority. When we come with that understanding or the right grounds, scriptural grounds. Then the local church becomes the sanctuary. It becomes the throne room of God. A glorious high throne from the beginning. Is our sanctuary. Jeremiah seventeen twelve. The sanctuary is intended to be the throne room of God. God has an administrative office high in heaven, he rules from heaven. But on earth, what are the spots from which he rules? Sanctuary. That's his throne room. Maybe search our hearts today as we listen to this message, whether our attitude has been right towards the house of God. Do I primarily come to receive something? Or do I come with the intention to contribute something? Do I come with the attitude of submitting myself to the delegated authorities? Do I come with the understanding that without my brothers and sisters, I cannot really grow in the Lord, I cannot be perfected in my life? Now, these are things that we need to carefully examine. In our lives. When we come on scriptural grounds. We enjoy the blessing of the Lord. Our loving and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the several lessons that we could learn from various portions of the scriptures. Help, Lord, that are assembling together, coming together may be very meaningful. Honoring the delegated authorities, honoring the Lord God himself. Knowing we are all gifted so that our gift sharing may be practical. What an honor you have placed upon us that we are called to be the prophets of God, to be called the kings unto God. To be called priests unto God. Help us, loving Father, that are coming together may be very, very edifying. And strengthening as we live in these days of this pandemic, where there is so much of fear, uncertainty. We are all Lord by the abundance of your house, you still supply and provide for all our needs. Help us to say with the psalmist, Lord, I have loved. The habitation of the house and the place where thine honor dwelt. And we may truly say like David, one thing have I desired of the Lord. That will I seek after. That I may behold the beauty of the Lord. And to inquire in his temple. Towards this end, I commit myself and all of us and pray this with thanksgiving in the name of our Lord and our Savior, Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.